Okay, I've got 6:30. We'll call a meeting to order. Under old business, I met and worked with the ISO representative, and they're doing an audit for the town on the water hydrants, fire department, et cetera, which is how they set our insurance rating, and it will gauge the cost that insurance companies charge you for your homeowner's insurance. And we did get flow testing of hydrants in town and met with the gentleman after that, so I don't know when they'll get back to us on that. But it's a pretty comprehensive process to go through. But anyway, that was completed there the first week of December. Tonight was going to be election of officers, but I think maybe we should table that till next meeting with Darrell being gone, and so I would like to do that.
Best sharks and I'm like, "Darrell," or something?
Yeah, we could, two or three offices a week. I brought up, just briefly in December meeting, just kind of in passing, I have a quote here from Midwest Windows. What I did was to ask the gentleman to come by and give us a quote on replacing the three windows in the bay of the town building, the old firehouse. Those windows are in pretty bad shape. And so here is the quote that they gave us, and this is for installation. All work to be done, and mortar the bottoms for $1,494 to replace all three of those. He measured each, and for some reason, each window's a little bit different in size, which I thought was really odd. So he's making three different sized windows if we choose to do that. Yeah, if you want to look at that, Larry. I have also met with Byler Construction to get a quote on ventilating the attic area, especially to help your office, Kathy. Along with that, I asked him to quote putting aluminum on the fascia and the soffit of that building, because it has always been painted, and it's due for a painting. And I thought it's a good time probably to get a quote on that. The front and back gable where they would put the vents, I asked for him to go ahead and quote siding, vinyl siding on that, so it should be made as free from that point on. But I don't know when he'll get us that quote. Do you have any question on this, Larry, or any concern?
They're double insulated or people?
They are, yes. Yeah, vinyl clad, double insulated, double hung window rather than the kind that's out there.
Yeah, there's around like 61 years old.
Does that exist?
Metal. It's probably not too bad for the life, but...
Yeah. So would you be in favor of pursuing this?
Yes.
For that? Okay, I'll take that as a motion, and I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? So Kathy, here's a quote, and I will need that or a copy thereof to get ahold of him. You talk like it wouldn't be until March or April before they could even get to it on that.
That one that's broken out's been covered, hasn't it?
Yes, yeah. And we do run minimal heat in there, so nothing freezes, so it'd be a good idea to do what we can to keep little heats in there. I worked with Chris O'Brien at the Emergency Management, and I don't know if that's his actual title now, but there were some CRF monies, the Corona virus relief fund monies. I worked with him on trying to, or actually getting the application for that. We sent in for two different claims. They got back to us the other day. They have approved the first claim, and that is for reimbursement of Jeff Ramey's salary for the town. That was an eligible item, and so that reimbursement has been okay, and it should be coming through to you, Kathy, very shortly. The second claim was denied. It was dealing with the fire department, and it was for reimbursement for the pagers that the fire department purchased, and it was denied. So we did get part of that money. And if there's anything that you can think of, Larry, or Kathy, you know, I don't know that this round is open, but if there is another round that we would like to use that for, you know, it's any kind of protective equipment. And Nick, you've probably been in meetings where they've talked about those things.
Cleaning stuff, masks, new software on things, they've used that on different things. Trying to think what else I've seen them apply for.
Did he say why that second one's denied?
It had to do with, and I think it was the auditor had an issue with replacing monies for radios and pagers. There was a concern about that, and so they denied that.
You have to directly, somehow, to the virus and changes maybe because of the virus. They have very specific language on it.
Yeah. And our gear at the firehouse, that is the PPE gear, is replaceable through the county. They fund that, so we don't actually contribute to that. So we could have used that if we were buying it out of pocket, either the department or the town, but that's not...
The county might be able to ask for that, then. I don't know if Chris...
I think they could, yes. I think that...
I'm sure he's always in that, though.
Yeah, yeah. But I appreciate Chris's help in sitting down with us and working through getting that application in, and we'll see what the future brings on that. The other thing I have under old business is any ordinances that we've got hanging that we want to clean up, or do we want to have discussion?
There might be. I'd have to check my to-do list. The two things that I put to the front were the two small claims cases have been filed. We tried to serve them. They haven't paid, unless we confirm with you today. But they've been filed, so we're waiting for debt collection. And then the quiet title, the 30 days end on Friday for the House on Main. So I'm gonna see if I can get the judge to order a default judgment without a hearing date, because if he does that, then we immediately get an order of quiet title.
Okay.
Then we can proceed to sell.
Okay.
So those are two things that I've been working on. And I haven't forgotten about my water letter. But I think we do have an ordinance that...
I'm still waiting on the copy of the two ordinances that we've had, these last two ordinances.
All right.
Because I don't have those. The only one I have was the, gosh, the very first one we passed. I think what the very first one was.
Was that the mowing ordinance?
Yeah, that might have been mowing.
The weeds?
Because I don't have anything else. We did the fire, the noise one.
We talked about building permit.
Firearms one is the one that is outstanding. I haven't done it.
Oh, that's still waiting.
We're talking firearms in town.
Yes.
I haven't done that.
And we talked about building permit also. And that generated a little discussion from the community. I had some questions about that, and I further explained the rationale behind what we were doing.
Yeah, it's just basically knowledge-based, so the town knows what's going on. If there is an issue, then we might be able to point out that there's utilities going through there, or there's this, or there's that. It's basically a safeguard for everybody. But all right, so yeah, those are two that I'll get done.
The payment for that water from that Tarot company, are you willing to just let it go at this point in time, or are you...
That's really a few guys. It was more of a "don't do it again" type of setting.
Right, that's exactly right.
They haven't done it again, but...
Okay.
Since this is, what, six, seven months later, I'm wondering if it's worth investing more?
If we had to go to court on it, I'd have a hard time just like, you know, the most likely. But it's more of a deterrent was the position on that.
Yeah, because it was a minimal amount, it was the idea.
It just didn't deter.
Right, right.
And I think at that point, it's probably been maybe just by us inquiring, asking.
Right, okay. I am okay to just table that and not pursuing further.
And that's something that happened again.
Jim, what about the stray cats running around town?
We'll get to that after this part of the meeting. Answer your questions.
So firearms ordinance and building permit ordinance, so the two?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'll update you with the court dates on the small claims when they get here.
Okay.
Should be about a month out, or so would be, I guess.
We talked a little bit about salary ordinance, salaries at our last, at the executive session. And what we have in front of you there are some of the notes that came out of that executive session. The only thing there that I would like to see is on... Number three we were talking about, right?
Yes.
Number three, that we put an amount on that. We did not increase that the other time, but I would like to do that. I think that's worthy, especially with the work that's been done lately. So I would think another $50 on that a month would be...
That's one of your...
Yes, it is. Yeah. I'll just do it as an entire motion.
Okay. And then I put this sheet of the mileage on the second page, so you can look at that to see if that's what you wanted to do.
Do you have any questions, Larry, on any of those? I think that pretty well reflects what we talked about.
Yeah. And that water deal, that dropping that is...
Okay. Yeah, we talked about putting in four miles. We've never had any information, any words there that talked about what we paid per mile, and we've never had claims for that. But I think it's probably time for us to look at that from several different points of view. You might explain where you got this from, what's here?
Came from the Indiana League of Municipal Clerk Treasurers, and they sent out that the Internal Revenue Service today as of 2021 issued the rates. For, it shows 56 cents per mile for businesses, and then it's 16 cents for medical or moving purposes of active-duty members, and 14 cents per mile on charitable organizations. So the 56 cents is what sounds like we would be using for anything that's driven with your own personal vehicle.
Would that be a statute for state of Indiana?
State of Indiana's mileage rate last year was 40 cents a mile.
Okay.
That's the federal rate, and they're bringing it down a cent and a half from 57 and a half. The Indiana's last year was 40 cents a mile by statute.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they changed it or not. I can tell you here in a bit, though.
So this came from state, I mean, capital, then? By being federal, then?
Well, you can exceed that rate.
Do whatever you want.
Yeah, you can do what you want.
Yeah. I wonder why they didn't use an Indiana one?
When I was a principal there, we never got paid the federal rate.
Indiana Department Administration says it's 44 cents a mile in Indiana.
Yeah, because that would be better than if that's the case to use an Indiana one. Yeah, because this is what they were sending to all the clerk treasurers on our emails.
Yeah.
And so that's for cost of curbing by, for all state agencies, including persons under contract in the state. So that's what the state does, and the federal government does what they do. You guys are obviously free to do what you want, but I mean...
How do you feel about it, Larry, adding a mileage? I mean, I think...
When you check the wells, the pumps, that's about a $1,200 a year thing or more. Should be paid, it's being done.
Right, right.
It's two and a half miles out, two and a half miles back, so...
Now, you're talking about then for me.
Yes, I'm talking about your mileage.
On top of this, on top of this, then? Or did we raise that?
I don't know that we included it within that, with that raise. I can't remember our discussion.
I've never had a discussion on our mileage.
Okay.
That I recall. I know I've thought about it several times. It is, it does happen.
Sure. And I think there's others that have that. As I was telling Kathy, Tom has mileage. Jeff Ramey has mileage. If Jeff were using the town police car to do something, that's different than his own vehicle. They would not be able to recoup mileage for that.
Even when Tom goes to some of his meetings?
Right.
That would seem to...
Yes, I agree, 100%.
And I've gone to a couple of meetings, but I didn't ask for anything. And that was before COVID hit, but yeah.
It wouldn't have to be on every occasion, but some things need to be covered.
Yes.
The daily, the daily stuff that happens.
Run to Ace for something in Bagdad.
No, no. Like a Mike was in Brownsburg, and I'm not sure where Tom went for his, but you go.
Well, I think I'd include that if I had to.
Yeah.
So would you be opposed to adding that 44 cents to the state?
Just to anybody that has any town association or water association of mileage?
Yeah.
You can just be paid out of...
I apologize. They changed it March 1st of this year to 39 cents a mile.
Of last year?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, last year.
So they haven't done anything yet?
No, let me see what that other one was to make sure it wasn't more recent. At that same dot. So that one doesn't...
And you said we are free to pick and choose?
Yeah, you guys can do what you want, and you're not bound by that. That's, I was just giving you that as some guidance that there's different rates. That's an eternal thing for you guys. It's more of a handbook thing than anything else.
Right. I have no problem staying with the discussed 44 cents a mile.
16.
Is there any other areas there, Larry, that you would want to discuss? I mean, I think we followed pretty much that format. I don't have any issues there.
None of them are, I can't second anything.
Now, do we want to put in our minutes on this that we were looking at? Were we looking at so many, approximately so many hours a month? Didn't we just do that?
Yeah, and I think you could probably add it to this... And that before my discussion was for 30.
30 hours in.
Yeah.
Because I had that on the old one. So if we put that in there, because this will go in the minutes. This is what I, yeah.
Yeah, the 30 is, was the discussion amount.
Okay. Which was no problem, like him?
No, no problem.
And then the cleaning lady, I just now thought of this. Then we paid her so much, then cleaned the park.
Yes.
Don't we?
Yes.
I didn't do it last year. She didn't open it up.
Right. I think it was the same as this building.
Because I paid her one month's sum?
Because I think we, yeah, I think it was just double that. The amount stipend here and the park were equal. Does that sound... I'm pretty sure that's what it was.
I said that's been almost two years ago now. And I meant to look at that, and I forgot.
Yeah, I'm almost positive. I know that the amount that we were paying her. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the salaries as presented. Is that a second?
A second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
I'll get Darrell a copy of this the next...
Yes.
I'll get a technical difference.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, I don't have anything else on here for new business. Nick, I'll turn to you next.
So I kind of touched on that a minute ago. The two things I've been working on as a new business was the petition of quiet title on the 36 South Main Street house.
Right.
We got service on everybody. Our notice of publication has also ran into 30 days since the last publication ran. So we've met our statutory requirements. The 30 days end on Friday. So my intention is early next week to see about getting a default judgment order, quieting title in the name of the town marshal. Once we have that, then the marshal can transfer the title to the buyer.
Yeah, and I've been in contact with the company to fix that back lot, and I still, I mean, they've just not worked it in the schedule yet.
Okay.
But that needs to be done before we turn that over.
Okay.
And I've pushed for that to be done, that we have a deadline that we need to... Because once we turn it over, we'd be trespassing at that point, right?
Right, we would be. I'll be ready as of next week for marshalling on the ability to do it.
Yeah.
But we have some leeway there as far as when we can do it.
I know the buyer is anxious, because he's contacted the real estate company.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Wheeler about it and explained the timeframe. This would actually be sooner than what I told them. I told them it probably ended January.
Okay.
So this is just a way that we don't have to have a hearing if the judge grants it this way. Otherwise, we have to be calendared for a hearing.
Is there a reason you wouldn't?
I feel very confident he'll grant it. I looked at the statute. I don't see anything in the statute precludes him from doing that. So barring somebody objecting between now and me filing that, which isn't likely.
Okay.
The other thing was this two debt collection cases. We had sent a letter, neither one had paid, so we went forward with filing the cases, and we're just waiting on court days. And then I'll work on those two ordinances, with the building permit and firearm ordinance.
Yeah, if we could do those building permit ordinances before spring, I think that would be good. I've already talked to a couple of people who talked about adding on or building something.
And just to reiterate the desire there is just to be knowledgeable as to the, it's not meant to preclude things. It's just a protection safeguard. It's actually the town to know if something's going on. But, so those shouldn't take much time. I maybe will have those for next meeting. I don't see why I couldn't, barring something coming up. It's just my focus had been on the quiet title part was what I was, that's kind of fairly significant process to go through. We're in a good spot with that, though. So that's what I had in mind.
That 30 days for a year, right?
It did. So you have to give notice for three consecutive weeks in the local paper and the county. And then 30 days from the last date of publication, you're eligible to receive an order.
Okay.
And so that 30 days ends on Friday.
Okay.
So we've had our three publications. It's just 30 days from the last one is Friday. And then two things can happen. I can ask for a default judgment, because nobody objected, which is what I intend to do. And if the judge grants that, we get an order of quieting title, which makes us have good title on the property. And at that point, we're eligible to sell the property and get title insurance, which was what the holdup was, was title insurance. We're able to sell to somebody if they don't want title insurance, but purchase that wants title insurance, and so we have to do that. But yeah, so we should be fine on that as of Friday. And then, like I said, if things go according to plan next week, hopefully we'll have an order.
Okay.
And if I get an order, I'll make sure, let the guys know that, so...
Be great, thank you.
Now, will I have a bill from the abstract office for anything? Or is this...
I hate it.
That is all in this?
It's included in that, yeah. We just, for the towns I represent, will advance cost. Because we know you guys...
I just wanted to make sure whether I was going to have another bill coming through.
No, you shouldn't. It should have a title search bill included in my bill to you.
Yep, title search.
Yeah. And any certified mailings also, we would advance payment on, so...
Okay.
But that's just what we standard do, because it stops us from having to...
That's fine, I just want to make sure.
So yeah, you shouldn't have any other bills coming.
Okay.
Barring Mr. Wheeler having something, you know, for sales or something.
Okay, so we'll prepare to have that, be ready to be turned over within the next week and a half, two weeks, huh?
All right. That should be fine. If for some reason the judge won't grant it, I'll let you know that.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm 99% certain that it happens, so...
Good, good. Tom, you've got good news for us, don't you?
Kind of good news.
Well... Go ahead and kind of start there at the beginning, and we'll go through that.
All water utilities in the state of Indiana are being required to do a water loss audit.
A water loss?
Water loss audit. Basically, this stems back in the drought of 2012, when it was so nasty around here, or what was not a lot of water. The rivers were low. So there was a group got together, the State House, and looked and said, hey, water is a valuable commodity. What can we do to make sure we're not wasting it, losing it? So we had to come up with an emergency response plan initially, what we do if we had, you know, a loss of water, how we're going to get by. And then they came up with, saying, hey, we ought to do a water loss audit. And they based upon year 2015. So in 2016, we did the water loss audit. Basically, they sent, you got online, and you found the American Water Works Association software program, and you filled your numbers in. At the time, we had a, out of 0 to 100, we had a score of 30, is what we came up with. There were some utilities that had issues on how they got them filled out. There's a lot of questions about it. So they came back, and there was some training early January last year, basically how to fill these audits out with a mandate that it had to be completed by the 1st of July, and it had to be validated by a third party. Back from the training, I took the training, and I took the validation training, I got licensed. My idea initially was, hey, some of the small utilities around here, we could go back and forth, you know? Somebody fill out the audit, I could be the third party for somebody else, you know, just kind of work that through. Then the COVID hit, that kind of moved everything back. So the date was January 1st, a few days ago, and what was the drop dead date. We had ours done in June. I went through, they had a list of like, a four-page list of people that were validators, excuse me. And I picked Westler at the time. Called Westler and said, hey, we need to get this validated. What does it kind of cost to do it? And they recommended, they said, hey, our cap, our group with Mike Novak, they're going to do it for free. So hey, we turned there, and on June 5th, sent Mike the audit, and figured, okay, we got to the end of the year. Come December, we're kind of like, hey, we still haven't got anything finished yet. So I sent Mike an email the 1st of December. Didn't hear anything back from him. So I sent him a call on the 9th. A couple hours later, I got an email back from him and said, hey, because of the Indiana Finance Authority, that's the group that has the money for the state revolving fund and where we... because of the Indiana Finance Authority, that's the group that has the money for the state revolving fund and where we get our grants from. They're basically the entity that is kind of driving this thing. Because of something, and I still don't understand the whole deal, but they were not allowed to do validations for small utilities. So went back to Westler and like on the, yeah, the 9th. And said, hey, what would it cost to do the validation for us? Well, they came back and said $2,000 bucks. I couldn't believe it. I know it takes some time to do it, but it's like, we're doing all the work to put the audit together. All you're doing is looking at our numbers and make sure they look good. I called the big man, called Kevin and said, hey, do we want to spend $2,000 to get this done? So a lot of talking back and forth. Looked at some other validators and Westler came back and said, hey, we can do it for $750 bucks. Which that's the best number I could find. I found one lady down Wester Hope to do it for $750. UMAC would do it for 800, but we got it for $750. So you'll be receiving a bill from them. Now, he went through and validated all the information we had. Changed a couple of things. The big thing was I had put down there, we have a water pressure like 42 pounds. He was calculating 54. I mean, but not anything major. Anyway, time was all done. We had the validity score of 30. So we're still back in the same arena that we were before. Since then, I've been talking around to people and there's a group called the Alliance of Indiana Rural Water. They have validators that did it for free. Talked to him yesterday, the guy I know, and he commented that next go around, it'll probably be an expense, but it won't be near what we paid this time. Now, the audit has to be done every year. And every other year, it gets validated. So it won't actually get validated again until 2022. So we've got some work to do there, but I'll need to begin with you again this year and get those same numbers and do that same scoring. We did get confirmation yesterday from the Indiana Finance Authority that they received our paperwork and they're good with it and we're good for the year. Now, one of the things with the Alliance of Indiana Rural Water, my previous job, we were always a member of the group. And there's a large membership that they've got. If we want to be a member as in Marshall Water, it's 120 bucks a year. If we just want a personal membership, it's like 60 bucks a year. It's something to think about if we want to, you know, go down that route. It gives us a little more clout and making sure we get on their list to get it done. So basically, the whole audit came down and because of the level we're at, you know, some of the recommendations is looking at analyze business process for customer metering and billing, conduct a loss assessment. I mean, it's nothing that we're not doing already. It's just that we're not a large utility. We're not doing, you know, meter adjustments. We're not doing some of those things that makes your score higher. So basically, the bottom line is $750 bill coming to Westler.
Thanks, Tom. That, I know it took a lot of legwork on your part to get this put together. You were talking about water pressure. Went back and pulled the report that was done on those water hydrants that were surveyed. The least amount of pressure on any of the hydrants was 50 pounds.
Good to know.
53 was the highest pressure. So. And I don't know exactly where the tower was at that point in time, whether that was on a full tower or not. That wasn't recorded.
So those are good numbers.
Those are good numbers, yes.
My guess is it was about 50 most of the time.
Okay.
Unless it's using longer than those drugs.
Which 50 is a good number. I mean, it really is for our community.
The reason we added it 22 and 44 pounds when I had the water is because I don't know if we had a bunch of cheap nylon fittings at one time came through years ago. But much above that, they would start popping. So we just, with the old tower, we just left it at 50.
The other thing, this tower is 25 feet higher. So we have the ability to get more pressure. I don't know what we could have gotten out of that other tower. You might know, but.
I don't know.
Yeah. Anything else, Tom?
That's it for me.
Thank you. Kathy?
We have claims. Down in the water. What he's looking at. And truth be known, we are looking at those meters and things, just like I sent Jason up today to check meters that, you know, we were questioning, but there's no way to actually.
You get a higher score though if you're saying, hey, we're moving 10% a year, we're validating the meter readings. If they're all, especially the master meter that comes from the pump house. You know, if we validate that every year, if there's an adjustment to it, go back to the flow numbers for each month, make those adjustments. You know, it's over and above what we do right now. And I don't personally see any reason to do it. But on the same token, Marshall is a lot harder head than a lot of utilities on what we're doing to keep above board, looking at, you know, the water loss leaks and everything like that. So I think it's a very well-run operation, you know?
You know, that was one of the responses that I got when I asked the engineer, what would happen if we just refused to do it and save that money? And that person said, you don't want to do that. You think about where you started in this process and the amount of time and money we've gotten to this point. You don't want to lose all that.
And the cloud is if you don't do this on an annual basis and you need a new water tower, you need a grant, you go for that money, you know, if you haven't done it, you're going to, you know, you need to start doing this. We need to see you actively pursuing water losses. It's a valuable commodity. What's going on, you know, so.
Yeah. And yeah, we need to know where our water is going within recent years. Like I said, this made us look at, start writing down if we've had a fire, if we've had a major leak or to help you to go back.
It's a big difference on when you do that calculation for water loss a year.
Right, right. Here's my water adjustments I've made for the month. Nothing really. Some new customers come to town.
Good, good.
Yeah.
And you said, I think you told me today, you only had two meters that you had an issue with reading?
Two or three, but yeah, we got all those 20-some changed out and yeah, that was good. But I think we're going to start seeing because these older meters now are starting to drop off, so.
Is there been any more discussion about GPS and K meter pits?
I've had some discussion. I had some with an engineer. I had some with Bloomingdale Telephone, trying to get a device that would locate that, that GPS.
That'd be a great idea for me.
Yeah, because you guys had to go look for Hess's the other day, didn't you? The old Maxine McGee house.
Yeah. Your phone will give you GPS, but it's in a matter of, I don't know, 10 or 15 feet, I think.
Well, we can get there by walking into the.
Yeah, we kind of know where that's at.
Yeah.
Bloomingdale was going to check into it for us to see what was available to. If we could get it down to 12, 14 inches, we'd be really happy.
Help from digging.
What an asset that'd be.
But I know that surveyors have that capability, but.
Roger Azar is helping Rockville with that. They're using him as an engineer, but that's Deckard engineering out of Rockville as well.
Right. I would like to see us have the ability, have the tool with the mapping so that if we have a valve or a meter pit, we know the GPS of it. We can just walk out there and find it. Because we're digging and hunting for things that.
I think it's fairly costly to get that somewhere set up with the GPS and things. I don't remember what the number was, but I don't recall it being real cheap, so.
Yeah, we.
But you only have to do it once and then you got it, so.
We had gone down that road with our, we talked about doing a mapping program that would map that when we did the water tower and we had some funds left over. But it came down to then you had to buy into software and then the company would have to actually enter all that information. So you had another bill that was going to be reoccurring. Yes, we do need something.
Yeah, anything where it's GPS or anything of that nature, all becomes software-related at this point and.
Yeah, and 911 can't, they can't. 911, 811, 811. They can't locate it because all our lines are transite and they have no tracer wires. So I'm going to get those numbers.
I don't know if Deckard's doing it for them or they had a contact they gave them. I don't, it was a conversation several months ago. So I don't recall if they gave them a contact or if they're doing it exactly for them, but that's what they had talked to.
Or town.
Right there is a lot of our knowledge. But we can't find something we call.
Past experience.
Look how close these numbers are.
Oh, yeah, that is.
And a better metal detector.
Okay, our claims that we approved today for for the water was $12,776.14. And bills for water, or claims for water for the water department was $12,313.71. Did I say that right?
Water number one or number two?
Okay, water is number one.
Okay, and number two is. Have we had insurance in there?
Yeah, just.
And 12.3 is collections?
12.3 was the town expenses, claims, not collections.
Just on that if you want. And that's just the summary sheet that I made so you don't have to go through and sign each one.
There you go. Just initial that if you want.
And then here is, of course, I have to get into doing all the big year-end thing, but right now, without anything, this is where we're ending in our, for water and town.
That's a balance here, okay.
Yeah. So. The towns will be subject to probably move things around depending on. But overall.
And we know where there's a couple of invoices coming.
Yeah.
Against the water. You don't have anything on this.
Just initial. That's just our internal controls. And then here is December's reasons.
So that average is up due to that leak? Just because of the month? There was a 38, there was a 38,000. Yeah, that's true. I don't, when did they puncture that main?
I thought that was not last month.
Was that in November?
I think it was in November, I think. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was. Did 52,000 bucks of that total?
Yeah.
At least 50,000. That would help.
What else you have?
I think that's it.
Chuck, do you have a question?
Yeah. All the young cats running around town, is there anything that can be done with?
Adopt them. I don't, I don't know of the answer to that.
We can, so we may have an ordinance that addresses it now, but it's more so a capture the animal type of situation and the ability to have somebody there while the animal's out and about to capture it. If we don't have an ordinance, we could pass an ordinance. Some towns do have those where they, if it's captured, it's taken in a humane shelter or, you know, some agencies dispose of them also. So I mean, it's kind of whatever your preference would be.
If we were alive with after your cats, if you liked.
Yeah.
He liked the rabbits. Yes, he did.
I'd have to look to know if we have that on our books currently as far as animals running at large or not. I know Rockville has it on their books and they have had issues with it.
I think there is something there on leash, like dogs on leashes, but cats, kind of a different.
If you got a cat, it should be on leash. You know.
Now, is this a paper pack or is this a straight pack?
If you're out on the, yeah, if you're out on a farm, you can do whatever you want to with cats. When you're in town, keep them off of other people's property because they're shitting everywhere. And I can't stand it.
Well, you know, when we had the fox den in town.
Yeah.
There was a difference.
It was cats.
There was. I'm not advocating for more foxes. I'm just saying that.
A double fox.
We've got a big hawk over in our vision. Big hawk. So he's by taking care of the rabbits and those squirrels.
It wouldn't save the rabbits.
I think that's a normal problem. I've heard that concern from other communities, other towns. They're able, I think, to police dogs much easier than cats. And they're feral cats or just strays.
But generally, if you own an animal, you're generally responsible for its actions. So even as a neighbor, you can bring a civil suit against the neighbor if it caused a damage to the property. So if it were to damage your property, a permanent damage, you could file a small claim suit against them also.
Is that shitting under property damage?
Not permanent, no. But if it were to scratch your car, for instance, or harm one of your animals, those are types of things.
Far animals are inside.
Yeah.
I would guess that there is an ownership of those cats. I mean, I see them in town and I, they just move through town.
I mean, if we were to narrow down who owned them, that might be helpful.
Because they're everywhere. I just think when we had that snow the other day, there was a cat or actually whatever.
Anybody have anything else? Stay in the journey. Thank you.